And even when we go to our neighbor to the south, there's some stuff that butts right up to El Camino. That's just, to me, you know, I could see something better. It is, it was said, and a lot of the comments were made at the planning commission meeting, which I watched, but it's the blight. It is that I believe at this time that the developers has reached out, has made some modifications, trying to assist in some of the setbacks and the breaks and, hey, you know, we're going to guarantee the library parking and, hey, on the permit program, fine. Hey, we're willing to step up to the plate and be good neighbors, fine, let us help instigate and initiate, I shouldn't say instigate, initiate the parking permit program or some funding source. Having no bundling, I think. The TCP plan, as you know, took what we had in the ordinance and it divided it in half as far as the parking element. This council took action, said to staff, bump it up. It just doesn't work. They're exceeding in areas that, you know, I think are noble, and I will tell you, there have been a lot of emails, phone calls, I was on the phone quite a bit this weekend, and that's okay. I would say to this community, I sit here and firmly believe that the other two colonies are accused, Marty and Laura, this is not easy. This has not been fun because of the emotion, because of the divisiveness. I know that I've had comments made to me that were, let's say, four-letter words I can't repeat. I know it's stuff about my family, it is stuff about other things, but I have to accept that, I signed up for it. So, you know, with that, Marty, you asked the question about a continuance. I mean, and I know this process has been going on three years and there have been meetings. A continuance also, to me, sets expectations that this project can come back and be so different that everybody's going to jump up and down and we go out. And really, the project would start over, and we know that, and so there's a concern that the city at some point needs to stand up and say, we have to move forward, we need development. Again, it is never going to please everyone, and I bet you if there were even three stories, my belief, I'm not saying it's correct, is there would still be some concerns with the amount of units or the traffic flow and other things as such. So, I believe that, you know, with the arena numbers and other things that we have to address in this community, and I know we have people in developments that, as we heard from Sylvan, for nine units, it's like, it takes three years. Why would we build here? Why do we come here? And what I've seen from GW Williams, other than other projects that was alluded to for a dealership, they've reached out to the community. We've had others that just say, too bad, and like it, which doesn't go over well in this community whatsoever, and that's why it didn't get built. So, on this project, I don't know that a continuance, what you would hope that that would gain at this point.
I would hope the developer would be able to reduce the mass. I want, I want to see a project there. This council has approved, this council has approved projects that maybe weren't so easy to approve, but the intent is there. There's, there are tremendous benefits financially for this project. Our city manager has been pounding me on that, and he's doing his job, and I got to do mine. And I'm concerned about the quality of life of the town that I've been residing in for 18 years now, and I am in favor of development, just that I would like the developer to, the applicants to contact the developer and say, hey, can we do something here to reduce the scale? And we've been told that that's already been asked, and the answer was no. And I'm asking again, haven't, we haven't had an opportunity in public to talk about this project. And I understand the pressures, and I do know that we need to catch up, but this is, this is a dent. This is, this is, this is a great start, but it's not the final solution to the housing problem. We need to, we need to build four times the amount, and we have to build 300-plus of the very low-income ones, which, where are we going to build that? So, I, I'm asking publicly for development, the development team to go back one more time, and understanding here with everyone, we're not, we're not having high expectations, but it's no longer in my hands, it's in the developer's hands to meet some numbers.
Through the chair.
Who is the saying?
Me.
City manager.
Yeah. So, I think it's important to set expectations and understand that part of the question that is being asked was actually asked two weeks ago. It was asked when the planning commission said, go back and ask the developer, can you take a story off? And we heard from the developer, losing 86 units makes the project infeasible. And you also asked, you also asked today, can you do away with the grocery store? That's a totally different project. That's not coming back and asking the developer to make some change in a week or two weeks. What you're talking about is a totally different project. And so, I know it's, I don't envy the position that you're the council are in, absolutely not. It's a very tough decision, and one of the hardest part of all of our jobs is managing change, and that's what we're talking about. A changing community, a changing region, and change impacts people, sometimes positively, sometimes negatively, sometimes there are fear of change that don't materialize, but people are significantly impacted by change. And I think we should ask the developer to articulate what I know they articulated earlier today, because I don't think it is in anyone's interest to ask the same question that has been, that the planning commission asked the city to ask the developer, they gave an answer today, and then we're saying today we'll go ask the same question again. And I know that it's hard to accept that we're at essentially the past the 12th hour, but there have been iterative change after change after change to make the project more palatable, to provide additional community benefit, to go over the parking, to go over the parking requirements, to reduce the amount of commercial space, to provide bike parking, to give 10 more years on affordability, to give an additional $5 million for the condo conversion, and then additional items tonight. And so, I don't think that we should continue to set the community up for a process that almost has been asked and answered, but I will have the developer opine.
Before you go.
Yeah, I have another comment.
Just for a point of.
Marty and Laura.
Just for a point of clarification, I didn't say, get rid of the grocery store. When we were, I mean, and if I did, I, that wasn't what I was intending to say, but I don't recall saying, get rid of the grocery store. I think when we were having a discussion, I mentioned, that was yesterday, talking about the traffic impacts and, but I just want to point a record that I, I didn't say that, and two, I'm not asking for a complete stripping of a full floor, I'm looking at what can be done to reduce the impact of this scale of this project. I'm open even to, based on the data provided from the developer about the parking requirements, I'm even open, open to, if it's possible, you tell me, we up the requirements, can we lower those requirements and make something that really everybody could be happy with? Well, not everybody, but the majority of everybody. I think, I think the people that are willing to stay this late and, and that they understand, hey, you know, you can ask one more time, and I'm not asking for the full floor, I'm asking for some reduction and not taking out the grocery store, but I'll leave it at that.
Laura.
So, another, another concern that I wanted to point out that I didn't address earlier, nearly a quarter of the nation's homeless population lives in California. California has 3.5 million fewer homes than is needed. So, Senator, Senator, State Senator Weiner, Scott Weiner, has been pushing a bill this past year called SB 50, which if passed would have overridden local zoning and allowed development, so some with no parking requirements in transit areas, some with increased height limits with more units, increased number of below-market units. So, back in April, we, as a city council, supported a letter that was written to Senator, Senator Scott Weiner, to say that we in San Bruno want to be an exception to whatever housing bill you pass in allowing, whatever needs to be built, built based on whatever the state regulations are, because we have the TCP and we have Measure N. And so, what you're talking about doing here tonight is to say, we have these things in place, but yet, we're not going to go by that. And that's exactly why the Senate bill is coming out, because of cities doing the same exact thing. And again, it goes back to that obligation, that we have documentation, we've done, we spent two years going through the transit corridor plan to develop that, we then got voter approval through Measure N, and here we are today. And I, and I get that, you know, this just seems so big, but it's exactly what the plan has designed, 1,600 new housing in the transit corridor plan.
Spread, spread across the transit corridor plan, there's nothing in, there's nothing in the transit corridor plan that addresses the scale of this project. The three catalytic units that they reference and the ones that you might say are ugly, because they definitely are, they're just boxes. Site two had 40 units, and site three had 57. So, the catalytic developments were small, and they were going to be spread, spread about. But it's okay, we can, we can agree to disagree, but we do agree that housing is needed, I just don't need as much, I believe that not as much housing needs to be put at that intersection. And I'm asking the developer publicly, at the city council level, to ask.
Sure.
So, I don't want to say no, but I have two options, and city attorney can help me out on this, I could either say, approve, deny, or ask for a continuance.
But, but in asking for a continuance, you're asking for additional information, you're asking for more data, so that's what a continuance does. If you're asking, for example, one less floor, 100 less units, or whatever, I'm just throwing things out, because it's late or early, is, that's not a continuance, that's a denial of the project, as the planning commission wrestled with as well, is, here's the project before us. So, that's, that's kind of how I'm attributing that continuance.
I looked over at our city attorney, and he nodded when I, when I, and I might be thinking that he, you know, my, my eyes might have been battering, but it is, I believe that's an option. City attorney?
I haven't actually fallen asleep, so the nod was that, yes. You, you can certainly approve the project, that requires three affirmative votes, you can deny the project, or you can continue it. I think the advice you've heard from staff is that if you do continue it, the developer and the city council should be on the same page about what is the purpose of the continuance and what is to be expected to be gained as a result of the continuance, otherwise it would essentially be tantamount to a denial of the project. So, if there's not that agreement about what it's being continued for, then I think an up or down vote is, is also appropriate.
I'm sorry. Forgot he stood up.
Thank you for the lively discussion. Projects like this are not easy, they're not easy in any city. We've built in big cities, we've built in small cities. We did a Whole Foods and condominium project in downtown Nevada, it's a four-story project in a one-story area with housing on one side and the downtown merchants in another. And we were Manhattanizing Nevada, but it's a treasured spot in the city, it helped activate the downtown. Whole Foods is very successful, the housing there, people walk around and frequent the merchant shops, and our thought here is this would help activate the transit corridor areas in the downtown as well due to its location. To your question, again, 30 seconds of history, we've been at this for three and a half years, and I know that there are members of the community that are not happy with us, I accept that, we have actually listened, we didn't do everything they've asked, but we've done a lot. We've added a ton of parking, we broke up this building 16 different ways, it was more of a kind of cigar at one point in time. We have added retail that I think will be, you know, needed and valued asset to the community, and we've changed around driveways and, you know, put in bike parking, we've done all kinds of things in here. During this process, it took a long time, some of which was you've had changes of staff, and so the staff had to get familiar with the project from the old staff, and we suffered the consequences of that, that happens, but also part of that, you know, this new fee has come up, and we basically agreed to pay it, so that's, you know, something that had the project moved forward faster a year ago, we wouldn't have been dealing with. So, there's a whole number of impacts that we've agreed to, the parking thing is the latest, the enforcement mechanism, and I think we've been, tried to be good listeners, and hopefully build something that the city can be proud of. We have a couple of factors here that, that are not in our favor in terms of potential continuance. One is, we're a week or two away from signing a lease with a major national grocer, that they have deadlines as to when they would need to move in, and if they can't move in within a certain time, they say no, and they go find the next project because they have so many stores they have to open, and that's a big consideration. We've worked with them for over a year in good faith on our part and candidly on their part, and I think it would be a blow to the city's reputation with this national retailer to have this potentially move out to a point where it hurts our ability to deliver the project. The other thing we did is we've made commitments based on providing from staff on, to purchase property here, and put up, you know, major option dollars to buy the adjacent piece of property, and candidly, a large overpayment to get there at staff, former staff's request so that we could kind of round out that block on Building B, which is one of the first reasons the project got bigger, is because there would have been a project there at some point anyway, and what didn't want, they didn't, staff didn't want two disparate projects that had competing architectures, et cetera, and wanted kind of a unified block. So, we've gone through this process a number of times, so I guess I would ask you, Council Member Medina, is, you know, what would you want to achieve by a continuance, because it puts us at great risk on those two points. You may not care about the second point as much, because it's just a developer who takes risks anyway, but the first one, I think, is a, is a major risk. And so, to the point is, I think we have answered the question, we can't lose a floor. If the, if the notion is, you either lose a floor or I can't support the project, then I think, I don't think there's a project, because we just, we cannot afford to lose the 80 units. I hear the him and the hing from the crowd, and I respect that, it's very expensive to build in the Bay Area, and one of the reasons you didn't have construction before is because it costs so much to build what's called a concrete podium, and you need a certain amount of floors above that to recoup that cost. Typically, it's five floors above, and here it's four floors above, so it's very expensive. That's why you see what is called type three construction being built, and probably every one of the buildings you looked at, Mayor Medina, was five over podium. It's 85 feet, and that is the norm all throughout the Bay Area, because that's what it takes to amortize the cost of the construction. Construction costs are 75% of the cost of these things. The land value could be zero, and some of these projects don't work unless you get the cost to amortize over, and that's just, that's why developers aren't the smartest clan in the world, but one thing we do understand is how to amortize those costs, and that's the only way to do it. So, if the question is, continue to study it again, I'd ask, what's our end game? If it's, you know, can you lose some units on that top floor facing the community of Mills Park? The answer is, we could, we could lose a couple of units there. There's, you know, staff, if you can.
Come and pull it up.
Yeah, pull. There's four different projections on each building that go out into the neighborhood, and we could lose, you know, one of each of those projections for a total of eight units, reducing some of that fourth floor impact. It's a hardship on the project, it would reduce the amount of total units in that amortization, and it would reduce the amount of affordability, because we're doing 15%, and so if the total number of units goes down, maybe you lose a affordable unit or two. I hate doing this at the dais, but, you know, that is something we could do. And I don't have a.
There's a laser pointer there. Is this a laser pointer?
Yeah. Okay. So, you know, maybe that unit, maybe that unit, maybe that unit, maybe that unit, and so, look, some of these distances here, this is 70, 75 to 80 feet just to the property line. When you start getting down to the homes across the street and you saw from the shadow, you know, the reason there's three is the equinox is the same in the spring and the fall, right? And then the solstice is the longest or shortest day of the year respectfully, so showing January doesn't have, you know, December's going to be worse than January. So, we pick the times and dates that are relevant there, we're not casting shadows on people, and with all due respect, when you're six feet tall walking down the street, you're not going to see that fourth floor from there. That being said, I get there's community concerns, and it's not just about height, it's just the number of units, and it feels overwhelming, and the traffic is a concern, and parking, and oh my. And so, we're willing to do that and push some of these back. The reason there are notches in this, I think you'd ask today, is because that's what it takes to comply with the transit corridor plan. The transit corridor plan said, we don't want big cigar boxes, we don't want to be like these other cities, we think we can do some good stuff here, and I think it was a good plan. And that's why there's these notches here, and that's why the, it goes up and down, because we wanted to be in compliance with the plan that you guys wrote. So, to your point, so where do we go, what is two weeks bias, what is, you know, I don't know, but I can't, I've already said, I'm sorry to say this, because I hate saying this, that I can't knock off a floor. You've knocked off, you know, 25, 30% of the units, now I can't recoup the cost of that podium, and there's no project. And so, I'm sorry for that, I'm sorry for us and the Williams family that expended three years and millions of dollars, and I'm sorry for the city that it won't get a grocery store and won't get the housing or the affordable housing. That being said, we can take some notches out here and, in essence, reduce the project by eight units, so that it pushes back some of that. And if you go to the slide, I don't know where that slide is, it shows the perspective, yeah, so basically you would basically say, you know, I'll take that out, and that out. And so, you have very, very little impact, and this is really not fundamentally different than that, right? It's one story, that's one story, that's two to three stories, there's some two-story houses here. They're really not that different. We worked hard, notwithstanding, I know that people here that are still very concerned, and I'm, you know, I'm feeling bad that we couldn't connect, but those are things you could take that out, you could take that out, and so suddenly you have more light and air. I can agree to do that tonight, and I don't think we need a continuance, but if it's lose 40, 50 units, we can't do that.
Okay, thank you. Marty, comments or questions of developer?
I think the continuance is something that we could figure something out, I'm hoping. You know, I, I totally appreciate what you're saying right now of that you're willing to, you know, take a couple of those out, being of the hour, different outcomes, if there's some changes of the units from the two bedrooms to one bedrooms, to being able to retain your units and in exchange for height, finding some, some way. I want, I want to get to a yes. So, you're looking over here.
City manager.
Through the chair. It's always risky when you do changes on the dais, and I, I think, you know, I'm never in, in favor of it, because there needs to be a process. What I would kind of say is we're processed out a little bit, and to talk about moving from two bedrooms to one bedrooms, you lop off a bedroom, you say 300 square feet, that's no noticeable difference in the height and the mass of the project. And so, I think if reducing the project by eight units, which the developer just tossed out, is a significant, give, what I would, what I would, what I would ask is, what does that do to the affordable housing? Because the affordable housing is 15% of the units, so are we using, are we losing one or two affordable housing units? Because we, we lose units, and I would just remind council that we currently have right now under $4 million in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, because people fee out. And what we negotiated with this project is actually getting the units, because feing out comes nowhere near the $600,000 to $800,000 that it costs to develop a unit. And so, if we're talking about changes and losing affordable housing units, that's a significant change that will negatively impact the community. And so, I mean, that's my question, if we lose eight units, are we losing affordable housing as well?
Well, the way we've negotiated is it's a percentage of the total units. So, on that scenario, I don't do the math.
You lose, you lose, you lose an affordable housing unit. So, essentially what we're talking about is shaving off eight units, one of those eight would be an affordable housing unit, and so, it would be loss of one of the 64, so we're talking 63 affordable housing units, and we can work on the unit count, but I think if, if that is amenable, the council can vote on that tonight. But again, setting up the, with everything we've heard from the developer, setting an expectation for a continuance for a change that's essentially not possible, and will be tantamount to not having a project because of the timelines on the, on the development, I would say is not in the best interest of this community, nor is it keeping with what 68.2% of the voters voted for.
Well, I think, well, you're, that's not a decision.
That's my decision, I asked my colleagues to support me on that.
You asked for continuance.
Yes.
But I think we're setting some false expectations, because you're asking them to go back, which the planning commission asked staff to go back. Now, we've heard, because there was comment made, but we haven't heard that response from the developer, now we've heard that. So, I almost feel like it's, we're setting, what are we, we're asking them to go back and come back with the answer, which is, what?
How can we reduce the scale of the site, and they're saying they could do eight right now.
So, you're wanting more?
How can they reduce the scale?
Okay, but, but. Okay, but, but, but what gets challenging too is obviously you and I met in March with them. And subsequently you've had other meetings too. So you, you know, we try to bring these things up too. And I know it's, it's hard because of the information that we've received and the, and the community input. But you're saying developer, go back and make it smaller. You're not saying about a floor. Units, change now the units, change the architectural drawings and the format. And so they're going to come back and let's say, let's just say, come back in two weeks and they say, we're in the same situation. So it kept, you know, and I feel bad for the community, and I appreciate you all being here. So, you know, that's where I'm trying to, to figure out where the end objective is. Because if they come back and it was in two weeks and said, we're in the same situation. So.
That would be very unfortunate. Look, look, look. When we met a few months ago, Mr. Mayor, with the developer team, we were there to listen.
And ask questions.
We asked a few questions. I asked a few questions. I was just hearing what they wanted to do. And so we are put in this position of, we weren't negotiating then. We were, we were there to, if we had any question to ask about it. And I think the size of the project was not clearly stated as it is being now of what can you do to reduce the scale and the, the impact to our community? That wasn't asked. And unfortunately, it's at this point, we don't have a development subcommittee to ask those questions in a format that where we don't have to negotiate, or where we have to negotiate from the dais.
Yeah. And I don't believe the, and we can go check with our former colleagues, the development subcommittee was a negotiating team. They inquired just like we have. And I always thought that in past council, it was like, well, why did those two get to have that opportunity and that privilege? Why don't I get it too? So each one of us were afforded that, which I think is more inclusive than just saying, I'm sorry, I'll pick two and the three of you just get to hear it when it gets here. So I think that is a better opportunity, which you've indicated to me, that you see value to that.
Right, but that was two months ago. I mean, like, that was pretty late in the game as well, correct? So my, my objective is to get a smaller side, side, excuse me, a smaller scale of project. I asked for continuance. I made very clear, I want to be able to say yes to a project. You know, as Tom mentioned, building housing is difficult and there's, there's negotiations involved. And I don't know what's more, I mean, I, I'm not approving it in this condition. So. So, so if, if we want to just say we deny it, then if that's the position that we need to get to, then we can get there. Or the other option is to, for me, based on the current conditions, is to ask for the continuance. And, and I want to see, I want to say yes. Get me to yes.
But can I ask if you can specifically state what you're asking for? I mean, I, I guess what I'm frustrated about is we've had this project, this has been out there, and you've been to many different meetings.
I go to these meetings and I'm not commenting to, and I'm talking to anybody because I'm respecting the process. The process is for, for when I'm provided an opportunity to discuss the project as we are now, as we're deliberating about it, this is the time.
Okay, great. So now you've seen it, you get to ask, please state what you want them to do.
I want, how many times do I need to repeat myself?
It's not clear.
Oh.
Make it smaller. Do you want it one story? Do you want it two stories? Do you want it three stories? Do you want it four stories? Make it smaller. Be specific in terms of what you want.
They are the developers. They know how this business works better than any of us. What they think they could do, basically looking at their numbers and looking at how they could make some adjustments, that's for them to decide. Now, they offered that, those units in which, I mean, honestly, eight out of 425 isn't really reducing much, honestly. But, but, so, so what's, what, all right, so let's talk about, do we want to go through this? We want to spend, you know, going back and forth? But they're not, they're, they have their instructions from their developer owner of what probably their, their limits are. And kind of like when we, what we deal with when we're on council of negotiating is empowering our, our negotiating team to have these bounds. So they offered eight, a full story is 80, I'm sorry, 86. What number would you suggest then if it wasn't eight? And maybe you have to go back. And that's why I'm saying we have a continuance. I mean, it is 1:40 in the morning and we're all tired and they need to get back. And another two weeks, I understand the frustration. But this is, this is, this is the biggest project with the most impact in a surrounding neighborhood area in San Bruno.
So, now I know Marty had asked for a continuance, but I know the attorney said you would have to be more specific. And I know, and I understood Laura's question is, what are we looking for? So, you know, it's just saying, go back and do it and you tell us. And then they come back in two weeks and we go, and let's just say it's consensus says, that's still not good enough. So you're, you're asking them to go back to do something without, without having the handbook to guide them. So I think maybe, I don't know if that's what the attorney was trying to say, because I, I think, but I don't know if the city manager has any thoughts or suggestions at this point, this hour?
If I can be frank, I think we're, we have a project where we are, we have two council members conflicted. And the project dies if it's not a 3-0.
Correct.
And we have a council member that is saying he cannot vote for the project. And, but he's also saying that he wants the project. My concern is, we go back, we talk to the developer, we come back with something, it doesn't meet the council member's objective and the cycle goes on. And there's a reason why you don't negotiate from the dais. There's a reason why you have professional staff that work with the developers because these things are very complicated. One piece affects another piece and, and there are significant trade-offs. So if we do have a continuance, one, we need the developer to agree to that.
Correct.
But I think we need to pick a time at which it comes back. Because remember, this was a project, this was the project that we talked about when we implemented the DIF, the Development Impact Fees. Because we knew that there were pipeline projects out and this was the most significant pipeline project out. And the project had to be deemed complete by May 1 and had to be accepted, had to have an agreement with the city by August 1. And all of the work took place and it was rushed to get to the point where we can have a first reading on the 9th and a second reading on the 23rd. And we knew that the council and Marty, you were one that was pushing. We need Development Impact Fees, we need Development Impact Fees, but we also need to be cognizant of our pipeline projects. And this was the biggest pipeline project. And so we created that structure where you have to be deemed complete by May 1 and the project has to be approved by August 1. And so we do, we are bound by that. And the developer, through their negotiations with the grocery store, has certain commitments that they need to make. And so continuing on indefinitely and coming back where we didn't hit the objective because we have one council member that has something that he wants to see. I think if you're going to give negotiating parameters, you're very clear on your negotiating parameters so your professional staff can be successful, in which case we're negotiating from the, from the dais on a consistent basis. And so I would ask, one, do we have the developer's agreement for an extension? It seems like a week or two weeks is appropriate. But what is the council or the, or the city council member looking for? I mean, we know that the developer has said they cannot take off a floor. They have offered up eight units today. We, we need to figure out what that exactly means if eight units does not do it. So, I mean, if we, if we come back and you know what, they're, the, everything affects a performer, right? So if it's no longer 10 million of community benefit, now it's X million, X lower of community benefit. Is that, is that palatable if we lose affordable units? It's a very complex negotiation because you pull from one end and it affects the other end. And so I think we need some parameters because we're going to enter this negotiation and the developer has a performer and a cost structure. And if we come back in two weeks and you say, well, I don't want to lose an affordable housing unit, or boy, you can only do eight units, it's a no. So we, we need a little bit more definition on what you're expecting.
All right. So it's like contract negotiations, you get a best and final offer. Give me their best and final offer. So they have to go back.
I think if you want to ask the.
They know the numbers, I don't.
Absolutely.
They know their profit target, I don't.
Right.
All I know is that based on the size of this project, I'm not supporting it.
And there are other components of the project that you like.
Absolutely.
And so what are you willing to give on?
So, so is this something, and that's why I was trying to ask for that because you can understand in two weeks, it's not a long time to come back and say, okay, well, that, that didn't work.
So this is, I totally get your point, City Manager Grogan, that negotiating from the dais like this, in this manner is definitely not cool, right? But, and saying no is not cool. No, it isn't. No, it isn't. We need to build something here. We need to find a compromise. And that's what I'm trying to do. So they, they're the experts, they know their numbers, they know what, what their bare minimum is and what they can do. And it's kind of like when you're, when you're buying a house. You know what your minimums are, you know, you know what, as the buyer, you know what your maximums are. When you're selling, you know what, what your minimum price is, the highest price, who cares, right? But I don't want to be flippant with this. I just, I just want the developers to come back with their best and final offer. And we build it. It's got tons of great things going for it. You know, the labor agreement, huge. I'm, I'm a retired union worker, construction inspector, worker from here, from this city. I'm aware of the benefits of having homes close to where you live. I used to commute an hour, hour and a half coming back home. One of the reasons why I quit early, was tired of it. So development is key to San Bruno's financial future. It's the right thing to do. I want to do the right thing. I want to get the project scaled down so that our community is more accepting, not all of them are going to, not all of them will be accepting, but it is better than what we have right now with the offer that's on the, on the table. So that's, that's what I want to achieve. The best possible deal for San Bruno, for our residents that are impacted the most. It's easy when you live on the other side of town. Very easy. And I can tell you, when, when they approved Aperture back when I wasn't on the council, I accepted it. All I wanted, and it's on video, it's on YouTube, thank you. All I asked for was a parking permit program and that was when, what, 2013? So we have to be cognizant. Development is vital, just that we have to be sensitive to our existing residents. They're the ones who voted us in. Power, colleagues.
Okay, so obviously the first, as Marty knows too, the first question even has to be asked at the developer. They have to accept for a continuance. It is, we can't direct it, order it, motion it, et cetera. So that might be the first, first step.
Is it possible to take a five minute?
Okay, well, at this, at this hour, I think I can use, well, we'll make it a couple minutes, but I, I could step out of the room for a moment, it would be helpful. To be very candid. Okay, we're reconvening and again, appreciate everybody's patience and staying up into the morning with us. Also, there are a couple loaves of bread still left in the lobby that I noticed have been gotten eaten. So Senior Senator thanks you for taking those off their hands. So, okay, so let's reconvene and City Manager.
Yeah. So I'll turn it over to the developer. So Councilor Medina, I think you put the phrase, you know, you wouldn't support the project and you were looking for a best and final between now and whenever. I think a convene, I think a continuance is very worrisome for us to keep and hold the grocer, given all the other things that need to happen with the, now you have the Development Impact Fee issue that potentially needs to get pulled out, et cetera. So in the spirit of trying to continue to compromise and work together, I'm prepared to offer a best and final. And that is basically to double what we talked about, which is basically to take everything out on this side in terms of that fifth floor. So at that point, you are really looking at this, from a fifth floor standpoint, this area in here, which is basically focused more on Al Camino. And again, that doubles, so this goes away completely from the ground view, that goes away completely from the ground view, this goes away completely from the ground view, that goes away completely, that goes away completely. So now the building is, you know, officially 80 to 120 feet back. And, and we would reduce the affordable units by the pro-rata amount and we would reduce the development, or the, the, the fee, the five and five plus five by an incremental amount. It's like 370 some odd thousand in total. So half of that now and half of it at condo. So, pardon me? So I think there's, at that point, you're 406 units, I believe? Pardon me? Yeah, so it's, I'm sorry, so 16 units in essence go away. It's about 4% of the project. And that's what we can do. We would humbly ask for your support on that. We think, given this late stage, it's a huge give, given all the other things we've been given, or given over the last three years. All that massing on the fifth floor is now removed.
And that's your best and final offer? And that's your best and final offer?
Unfortunately, it is. There's tremendous costs in this project. Again, there's a couple of other things we can talk about. One is, we can agree to use the city's cable company on an exclusive basis, assuming that it's owned by the city and assuming that it offers, you know, cable services. And there's also a community room across from the library that some folks have expressed interest in being able to use. So we're happy to allow the community to be able to reserve that through the city on a reservation basis. So it'd help try and make more community space available to the city. You have events at the library, et cetera. We're happy to offer that as well.
So this is extremely difficult. And at the hour of where we're at right now, do I have to give you an answer now, or can we?
I think what you have the developer, City Manager through the chair, I think what you have the developer saying is, they turn into a pumpkin, given all of the commitments that they've made to the grocer, given that, all of the concessions. And what you expressed is pushing the building back toward the front edge and the height on El Camino. Blows my mind, but they're willing to lop off 16 units to essentially do that and push the mass of the building further towards El Camino, reducing 16 units and committing to an exclusive agreement with San Bruno Cable and allowing the city to reserve their amenity room. And so, and the other things that were committed to tonight...
I didn't want to keep pushing, but we had talked early, and I know it was yesterday, but about up to $100,000 for permit program and/or enforcement.
Yeah, I just, I didn't repeat that because I'm assuming, just want, to be clear, it's still in.
But I just wanted to hear, because I know that you guys have to put it all together very quickly.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're writing it out now because it's rare that these things happen on the dais. But given the pipeline situation with this project and the implementation of the DIF and that it requires the two readings, and the developer is committing to, I think, accomplish what your goal was, which is to push the height towards El Camino Real and further away from the homes. And they're willing to offer that as a last best and final. I mean, I, you know where I stand.
Right, right, okay. So we did talk about, just for full disclosure, we did talk about the cable thing today. We did talk about the community room today.
Yeah.
And we got to where we're at now. And I believe that we closed public comment, so we can't hear from the public of those people that are most affected by this project. Who's my, one of the primary concerns that I have of how projects affect people that live next to them. Because it's really not going to affect me because I live far enough away, I could avoid the whole traffic, right? So my issue here is, is I've heard from the public on the previous proposal, and knowing what we know right now, and knowing the benefit that having a project like this is where it really is needed, and how much better will we be off in having this project with the scaled back amount? Now, that's something that, it's better, and I see a couple heads shaking, I keep a couple heads, you know, and that's what I feel as personally as a council member of having to hear our community's reaction, right? This is slightly, it's probably not as good as everybody wants, clearly not, but those days of three-story buildings are over. We have to build, and we have to build as best as we can. So I'm trying to find a venue to where we could get some input from the community. Because what we heard, they already expressed it, and the project has changed, tweaked a little bit, because there is additional benefits. People are, it's not only about money, right? But money is very important to operate a city. We now have a $500,000 exclusive agreement to utilize in our cable system, right? Can you elaborate a little bit on that? Because I don't know if, we need fiber in our city. We need to grow our city, and we have to try to compromise as much as we can without just selling out.
Yeah. So, an exclusive agreement with San Bruno Cable, and this is at the 425, so it will go down. I mean, it is significant revenue to our cable enterprise because we will fiber the building, and the business plan of San Bruno Cable rests upon fiber as the backbone. And we have experience with three MDUs right now where we fibered, and those are bringing in over one point...
Those bring in an incremental $450,000.
An incremental $450,000. And so it's not insignificant amount of money. I think you know the strides we made in our cable enterprise this year to stop the bleeding and to stop a monthly revenue loss, and we need more subscribers, right? And we need, fiber is the way to go. And to do a full build out of the fiber is several million dollars, and so we're doing it on an incremental basis. A 400-unit project will certainly help with that, and it will further stabilize the enterprise.
So is there a venue to obtain community input of those residents that are being affected? Is there a way within that timeframe to touch base?
Within what timeframe?
So...
Excuse me?
Within what timeframe?
So what the council member...
As soon as possible.
What the council member is asking is, can we have a venue for additional public comment? Well, that requires a continuance, and we've heard what that does to the project. And you asked the developer for their last best and final, and they stepped to the plate and, I think, provided a significant last best and final. And what I would say is, we have residents that are for the project, we have residents that are against the project, and a continuance, in my estimation, will bring out a lot of the sentiments that we have heard today. And at the end of the day, I'm being totally appropriate, the community elects their elected leaders to lead and to make very, very tough decisions that don't make everybody happy, but that really rest on what is the best collective interest for the city as a whole. We may not make that person that lives directly behind this unit happy. And hearing that they're still unhappy and don't want the building, I'm not sure that that would effectuate the negotiation of the developer providing their last best and final. I think that we're here, and the community is looking to you for, is this a beneficial project for the city?
Correct. It's also 2:00 AM, is that right? Clock right? And public comment's closed. Can we reopen public comment? No?
So I guess that's two questions. One, that's a legal question, and then that's, would the chairman of the meeting want to? But I'm sort of at a loss. I think as council knows, I was in Japan this morning at our sister city with Parkside Elementary, and so I flew back for this meeting. And so I apologize if I'm somewhat at a loss for words. But I think what you have before you is an amazing project for the city that will truly be a catalyst at a major intersection. And absolutely, new development comes with impacts on existing residents. And what I've heard consistently is, we want the height step back away from the single-family residential. Now, I would say that the plan as proposed had significant step backs. The, what the developer has provided steps it back even further. And yes, we're here at 2:00 AM, but we're here making an extremely important decision for the community for a project that has been over three years with change after change after change. And there are significant commitments and significant cost structures that, you know, some of the desires to lose the story, we know can't happen. So I would...
If I may, Mr. Mayor, through the chair, and to address Councilmember Medina's question. So I think it's important to just step back for a minute and understand how city governance is set up to evaluate development projects. So state law generally doesn't allow individual members of the public to vote yes or no or to exercise veto power over development projects. They elect council members to make those decisions and empower them to grant variances, to find sequoconformity, to do the things that are in your packet as the decisions that need to be made. And so the difficulty, I think, is that we've all seen in the audience, whether you're for the project or against the project, is that this process is a process which, while on the surface, might have appeared to result in, or could result in a better outcome, actually results in putting council members in a position that, in which they may be at odds with their constituents. And in a situation where council members are then ceding veto power to residents to say yes or no to projects. And so developers also have a right, and applicants have a right, to a fair and unbiased process from you, and they are entitled to expect that council members make decisions on development projects. And that residents, while they are allowed to express their opinions, and 50 of them have this evening, mostly evenly divided on for or against the project, once that's accomplished, then it is up to the council to make those decisions that the public has entrusted the council to make. So I hope that's helpful.
That's helpful, just that the conditions of the original proposal has changed.
Well, I think what's changed is potential use of their community room, use of San Bruno Cable. I don't think I'm going to perceive most people in the community wouldn't have a problem with that. My perception.
Probably not.
My perception is, is that they're not going to have a problem with the developer funding $100,000 for parking permit program or enforcement. So I think we're down to the units, and that's, they've given us 16, and I know how you phrase it as we do in union with the last best and final. So they've come forward with that, and so we are faced here. We also had probably over 45 speakers, some who are not here, or even more. And so, you know, they don't have that opportunity, even if it was tonight. So I think it's now down to us to make a decision and live with it.
I just, I think we've talked about it, I think we've talked about it, I think we've talked about it, and so I understand. I mean, I got, this is not an easy decision, and I haven't spent the hours, the time, the Advil, the headaches, the stress, over something that I take lightly. So I know exactly how you feel. So it's not an easy decision, and I get it. It impacts me, and it impacts family, and it impacts friends. I get it, I do.
It's such a surreal moment because it's something that I know that we need to do. And as a council member, you try to get, I believe in you, try to get the best deal for the city that you can. And I believe in negotiating in good faith. I believe that it's part of our future. And I would, I, it's so awkward of being in this position and being able to not be able to reconnect with your constituents, who are those that are being most affected. And knowing what they know now with this project as it's changed, and not being able to obtain their input of knowing everything they know, or everything that has now been revealed, that, is it okay? And some people are going to say yes, and some people are going to say no. So that's why I wanted the continuance, to be able to kind of get back to our residents and say, "Look, you know, we're going to say no? Does everybody think that this affordability is going to get better in the next six months and next year? No, it's not. So what are we going to do about it?" So that's why I'm really at a loss, words. I wasn't expecting to be put in this position right now.
Not at this time, ma'am. Hold on, please let the council member speak.
Right.
Ma'am, ma'am, the last best and final was requested, they've come back. Please let Mr. Medina continue with his comments.
Bye.
I'm going to say no. Hey, hey, folks, 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 folks. Okay, everybody has a right up here to make his or her decision, and we all knew that this was going to be long and tough. The developers does not wish a continuance. So the other items obviously go away with that, the cable company, the community room, the $100,000, because obviously then, and please correct me, but there is no reason, or is it, am I required to go through?
Well, let's be clear, a denial of the project means that a project...
I'm sorry, let's clarify at the hour.
A similar project cannot be submitted for a year.
Correct.
So...
Which we know.
Okay.
So, but I just want to, it's good that the refresh is because it's 2:15 in the morning.
There's no coming back in two weeks. I mean, we should have our city attorney articulate what a denial means and what it means for the continued state of one of the major thoroughfares of our city.
So does, and thank you for clarifying at the hour, because, so, Laurie, you're aware of what the manager and the attorney said, just that it's a late hour, and you're aware, so.
So if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
So given what appears to be the situation, what I would do is recommend that somebody make a motion to adopt the sequoconformity determination. It's the first item in your list of things. And presumably, that motion will fail on a two-to-one vote. And then I would also make a motion to deny the planned development permit and architectural review permit for the proposed mixed-use development. review permit for the proposed mixed-use development at the center. Presumably, that will also fail as a result of a two-to-one vote, and those are the actions that staff would need to craft a resolution to bring back to the city council, as we've done on previous occasions, when the city council has made a decision that is different or that differs from the resolutions produced in the staff report. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Can you articulate that, the similar project cannot be...
Right. And so, then, as I think several people have said, a similar project with a denial, so a failed motion is tantamount to a denial. And so, the project would not be able to come back in similar form for one year under the city's ordinance.
So, I'm sorry. Okay, and with the hour, I think you may have to walk me through this a little bit, but what I'm hearing you say is we'll first start with the SEQA, and obviously with the two-to-one perceived vote, then that will then set us up for the next one, which will assist me.
Correct.
And then, with that, then the project is denied, and it's up to a year for it to come back.
That's right.
Because it's not in the same form.
Right.
Okay. So, I'll go ahead and just get it going. I'll adopt the, adopt for the SEQA conformity determination for the proposed mixed-use development at Mills Park Center. Need a second.
Second.
There's a motion made in second to adopt the SEQA conformity determination.
Councilmember Davis?
Do we need to do anything else?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
No.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And then, Mrs. Zaffrona, what's the next one?
So, that motion fails on a two-to-one vote, and then the next one would be to make a motion adopting a resolution approving a planned development permit and architectural review permit for the proposed mixed-use development at Mills Park Center.
I'll go ahead and make that motion, or introduce a motion for the resolution.
Second.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
No.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion fails two-to-one.
I believe those are the only two motions that need to be made. Obviously, there is not a, three affirmative votes in favor of either adopting the development agreement by ordinance or adopting the remaining resolutions. Am I correct in that assumption? And I'm looking to Councilmember Medina for an affirmation of that.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Okay. So, with that, the public hearing is concluded. We are going to move on to conduct of business, which we do need to keep going, so I certainly, please go home, drive home safe. And if we can get the other two colleagues back on the dais. Okay. As the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Salazar return to the dais, why don't we go ahead and start on conduct of business, item A.
Items, item 7A, receive staff report and adopt resolution. Calling for and giving notice of the holding of a general municipal election on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019, and for the submission to the voters of a ballot question relating to a local City of San Bruno general transactions and use sales tax. Authorize arguments in favor of, in favor or against measure. Authorize rebuttal arguments. Authorize city attorney impartial analysis and waive first reading and introduce by two-thirds vote of the city council in ordinance, adding Chapter 3.39 to the San Bruno Municipal Code imposing a transaction and use tax to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration.
Good afternoon, City Council. We are here tonight. Good afternoon, members of the City Council. We are here tonight to talk about a proposed local voter-approved measure. And so, I will give the presentation supplemented by our Finance Director, Keith DiMartini. So, the objective of the presentation is to receive the staff report, and we are asking the City Council to adopt a resolution calling for and giving notice of holding a general municipal election on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019, for submission to the voters, a ballot question relating to a local City of San Bruno general sales and use tax to maintain community services. Authorize the city council to conduct an impartial analysis, waive first reading, and introduce by two-thirds vote of the city council. And this would add Chapter 3.9 to the San Bruno Municipal Code imposing a transaction and use tax to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. So, the presentation tonight will have approving, improving fiscal sustainability. We'll talk about our community outreach efforts, we'll talk about the ballot question, and then we'll request City Council to take action on next steps. And then we'll have questions. I'll turn it over to our Finance Director to go through our fiscal sustainability.
I'm Keith DiMartini, your Finance Director, and so I just want to provide a brief overview of efforts that are currently underway or that are planned on improving the city's fiscal sustainability. First, and very, really important to the initial stages to a lot of the progress taking place, is the adoption of the city's fiscal year 2019-20 annual operating and capital budget that the City Council adopted on June 25th, just last week. In the many presentations that we held on the budget, we talked about many of the budget challenges that the city is facing in the, not only in the near future, but in the long term. We were able to make significant amount of progress in the 1920 budget in reducing the annual operating deficit from just over $2 million in the 1819 budget to just over $300,000 in the 1920 budget. So, we made a significant amount of improvement, a lot of that coming from the additional revenue generated in the general fund from property tax, sales tax, transient occupancy tax, and business license tax, at just over 8% annual growth, with expenditures only projected to grow just over 5% annually. So, holding our expenditures as tightly as possible, but we still do have a number of budget challenges. Many of them are up here on the slide, on the slide before you. We have a significant amount of deferred capital maintenance on our city infrastructure, including streets and roads. The current estimate is that we have about a $6 million annual deficit in our city's road, annual road repair program, and that number will only continue to grow to maintain a current PCI score that we currently, that the city currently has. We do have an existing operational deficit, as I mentioned earlier, although it's not as significant as it has been in prior years. There are rising costs from our, for many of our contractual obligations, for many of our city contracts, but as well as employee expenses with fringe benefits and pension costs. We have collective bargaining agreements that we'll be negotiating in the upcoming year. As we've talked about before, the cable enterprise has a fund deficit. Our stormwater enterprise fund has a structural deficit, where we are not bringing in adequate annual revenue from the property tax role to sustain the annual operation alone, let alone any capital improvements. We have a whole host of other IT system maintenance issues and equipment vehicle funding issues that result in a significant amount of pressure on the city's general fund and our enterprise fund. So, these are many of the budget challenges that we articulated during the rounds of budget conversations with City Council over the past month, month and a half. Here are the, here's the overview pie chart of our general fund revenues in 1920. Again, most of them coming from property tax, in the taxes slice, property tax and sales tax. You can see in the general fund that a majority of our general fund revenues are expended on the public safety functions with police and fire. That's primarily the main, the main funding source for those functions. So, where does your property tax dollar go? We've mentioned this before. The City of San Bruno actually only sees about 15% of every property tax dollar that's permitted to the county. A majority of your property tax dollars actually gets spent on supporting the public school systems in the county, as well as the county itself. For sales taxes, a really similar percent as well. The majority of every sales tax permitted primarily goes to the state's general fund. The City of San Bruno only sees about 11%. And what's before you this evening is a proposal to increase the sales tax rate for the City of San Bruno by a half cent. And during one of the budget presentations, we talked about a comparison of the, of San Bruno's general tax per capita compared to other cities in San Mateo County, and we showed a graph showing that San Bruno is a very low-tax city compared to many of our other cities in San Mateo County. And the increase of an additional half cent on the sales tax, we would still be considered a low-tax city. It's still far below some of the other cities in San Mateo County as far as sales tax revenue is concerned. On, in late November in 2018, the city manager presented an overview of the city's comprehensive fiscal sustainability effort. This is a comprehensive effort involving multiple staff at multiple levels to better understand and articulate many of the financial pressures that the city is facing, both of the general fund side and the enterprises. A lot of that work was done in conjunction with the fiscal year 1920 budget that you adopted last week, a couple of weeks ago. And there were three main goals of this effort, really understanding the challenge, articulating the fiscal challenge, and then developing and implementing strategies to address those issues. And here was the overall timeline from that project effort. You can see the ballot measure with a box around it, that's where we are today. We are on track and have made a great deal of progress on understanding what our challenges are. We've implemented a number of expenditure controls in 1819 to ensure that we came in on budget or under budget. We've had, we've had a series of community engagement and outreach efforts that the city manager will mention in a few moments here. You adopted a budget, and before you now is the proposal for a sales tax revenue measure to help sustain our financial stability going forward. So, this measure before you tonight is a proposal for local control for our local needs. As I mentioned, a significant amount of sales tax revenue doesn't even come to the City of San Bruno, it primarily goes to the state. And cities all across the state have had their voters approve of local sales tax measures, where 100% of that additional revenue stays within the jurisdiction. And so, that would give the city the ability of having complete control over that, over that revenue source and allocating it to the specific needs and services that you, as the city council and the citizens, choose for it to go to. And we wouldn't make this request without doing everything that we can internally as staff to ensure that we are maximizing the revenue that the city sees from our existing revenue sources. So, that was the first thing that we did when implementing the comprehensive fiscal sustainability effort. And this slide provides us a really high-level overview of some of those efforts. We mentioned already tonight a number of times, we implemented a comprehensive development impact fee program that when, those fees took effect on May 1st, and that will require developers to pay their fair share for maintaining and enhancing infrastructure for the city for years to come. We've also done a number of things to standardize and modernize our billing and our utility billing practices, bringing a number of accounts that were, that were out of compliance back into compliance, and being much more proactive with our communication with our utility bill payers. We implemented a series of budgetary and expenditure controls to make sure that departments came in on or under budget. We talked earlier today about the cable enterprise department. They've done a lot of work with renegotiating many of their longstanding contracts for more favorable terms and implementing a new rate card, again, to maximize the profitability of that enterprise. And in the 1920 budget that you adopted, they are budgeted at a very small surplus for the first time in many recent years. A number of things that are currently in progress, one is we are in the middle of a user fee study and a cost allocation plan. We know that many of our user fees that we charge, primarily like on the, on development project review, we are not fully recovering the cost of the city to actually conduct the required work on those, on those reviews. So, we are attempting to rebase line those fees so that they are fully cost-recoverable. We have also engaged with an outside audit firm to conduct a series of audits on our primary revenue sources in the general fund, property tax, transit occupancy tax, the sales tax, and business license tax. Those audits are underway right now, I'm monitoring them, and I'll be reporting back to council as we get some results. Our staff will also be working on a short-term rental ordinance, and then also analyzing any surplus or, and/or underutilized city property for potential sale or other revenue generation opportunities. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to the city manager.
All right. So, back in March of 2019, the city hired Godby Research to conduct a survey of local voters to really gauge their satisfaction with city services. And what we found out is that most of the citizens are happy with our services, they frankly just want more, and we're fiscally constrained, as we all know and as the Finance Director just articulated. We have significant deferred maintenance that we can't afford to grapple with, and our residents know it, they highlight it, the need to improve roads. We also wanted to assess the potential viability of a local funding measure to maintain essential services and identify those priorities of our residents around those services. And so, as I said, residents value, and they're satisfied. However, they want more, and should the city council wish to proceed with the measure in either November 19 or November 20? What the survey said is that the residents are in favor of that. And so, in November 19, which is shown as the first box, you had 58.6% as a definite yes or probably yes, and just under 70% for November 20, at 69.2% with a definite yes and a probably yes. And so, the question we proposed through this survey was, shall the City of San Bruno's measure to fund essential services and facilities such as neighborhood police patrols, fire protection services, urban wildfire protection, crime suppression and investigation, pothole and street repair, increasing parking supply, upgrading parks and other city facilities, and expanding services to support local business by levying a half-cent sales tax, providing $4 million annually until ended by voters, key point, with a citizens oversight committee, key point, and no money for sacramental, and all funds should be spent locally. And so, the voters said yes. And so, should the council decide that you want to put that on the ballot, the initial polling revealed positive, positive news. And so, what we have up here is the list of priorities that council and the community has seen, which, the first one being increasing pothole repair and other street hazard repair. Essentially, that's, you know, filling the potholes. We have a significant amount of potholes, and that was number one, hazard repair. Number two, sounds the same, but it's really different. It's ongoing street repair. If we don't have money to repair our streets on an ongoing basis, they only get worse. And that's the figure that our Finance Director quoted, which is we have a $6 million annual deficit, and so, the quality of our roads frankly is increasing, not getting better. And that is going to hamper our economic development opportunities as well. Maintaining neighborhood police patrols was third highest, attracting and maintaining local businesses, the fourth highest, maintaining city parks and playgrounds, and then similar, maintaining and repairing those playground structures was the next item. And so, after receiving that feedback, we then conducted a, another community priority survey, and this time, we sent an email survey out on Nextdoor, it's on our website, and we sent a direct mailer to nearly every, every address in San Bruno, asking for additional feedback, because the initial poll survey had a response rate of, or targeted 600 people. And so, what we wanted to do is we wanted to go out and have more robust impact. And so, what we wanted to do is, we wanted to go out and have more robust input and see, you know, did the larger community really feel that way? We know that the poll said that there is overwhelming support for a sales tax measure, but what does the larger community say? And so, per staff's direction, we initiated this multimodal community outreach effort. And we also sent a letter to community leaders, so every member of our Boarding Commission. And we articulated the survey, and we also asked them, are there community groups that you want us to meet with? And so, Keith and I have been on a bit of a roadshow, giving community presentations. And through this effort, we engaged over 28,000 residents to receive their output, and we received an additional 700 responses. This is the website that we have. It's Enhancing Your San Bruno. And we provided a summary of our efforts and frequently asked questions. And so, here's another quick summary of that additional outreach. So we received 229 electronic surveys, 456 mailed survey responses, for a total of 685. And I won't go through them, but frankly, it tracked. It tracked very closely to the first survey that was conducted. So we know, and we've confirmed, that these are the interests of our community. We don't have the resources, but frankly, they want more, and they've been really clear at telling us what their priorities are. And so, a few survey responses that we wanted to highlight for you. I have a couple on the board, and we've taken off the last name, but we wanted to just provide you with a quick splattering of what people said. Please pave my street. Parkside court, it's in bad shape and needs to be repaved. San Bruno has aging infrastructure like everywhere else in the region. We need to invest in a robust CIP to keep ahead of failures in sewers, streets, and water, and keep focused on fundamentals. Police patrols are especially during the summer months. Break-ins go up during these months. I fell twice, and they gave their street address, so please fix it. Deferred maintenance can become very costly, which we know. When I look at these, I really think about the app we have, SB Responds. And we get a lot of issues on SB Responds. SB Responds is a great tool for the community to communicate issues. But you know what? It doesn't fix them. It doesn't provide us more money. It actually, without the resources, it just provides a very efficient way for people to tell us about that pothole that we know we don't have the money to repair, or that street that we know we don't have the money to repair. And so, what you have your community saying is, we want more. And we want more resources and more local resources to improve the infrastructure, and some of our infrastructure is over 100 years old. And so, the ballot question. This is the ballot question that is before you. It is, I won't go through and read it in detail, but it is levying a half-cent sales tax to provide an additional $4 million annually, again, till ended by voters, and a citizen oversight committee. And it has all of those services that we know our residents value, be they increasing neighborhood police patrols, additional fire protection and wildfire protection, crime suppression, pothole, street repair, et cetera. And so, the resolution and ordinance that is before you tonight, it includes a number of different aspects. One is, it authorizes a process of permitting a community submittal of the ballot argument. It provides for the city council to provide an impartial analysis. There are a number of features to the ordinance, a little bit of a repeat, but it adopts a local transaction and use tax at one-half cent. It allocates the proceeds for general purposes. That whole, there's a long laundry list of need out. It includes strong fiscal accountability provisions that's until ended by voters. Voters have the power to enact it, and they have the power to end it. And it also includes a citizen oversight board. It's a retail-based taxed, and it will be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. And so, we're here to request council action on the reso and ordinance that's before you. And as far as next steps, we have the calendar. This repeats a lot of the work that has been done so far, but between February and April, we conducted the community priority survey. We presented those results to council. Council said embark on an education effort. We have done that, and that will be continuing. The initial ballot measure and planning and prep has begun, and we're really here tonight asking council for the first reading and introduction of the ordinance and resolution. And that concludes my presentation. We are here for questions.
Questions for staff?
I only have one comment.
Yes, please.
It's really the ballot question, so can you go back to that slide? So this is how it would, this was exactly how it would read on the ballot? So I guess I question why we start out with San Bruno's street repair. Is that going to be the biggest impact on this sales tax?
No.
Because I don't want to lead a resident to, you know, this sales tax is going to solve our street repair problem, and it's not going to. But it definitely is going to address and needs to address, you know, the public safety issues with police, fire mitigation. Those are like really some important issues. So I'm not sure if, are we worrying of that initial?
Yeah. So it's the title, "San Bruno Street Repair and Local City Services Measure." It's titled that way because we know when we did the priority, both in the initial survey and in the subsequent survey that we had just under 700 responses to, potholes and roads were number one. But what the community also said is, we know that we need money for a whole host of other things, and $4 million doesn't solve the road problem. And so, it's purposely meant to be a general tax to address an entire subset of services that we know are very much needed. And it will be a general tax, and will be allocated by the city council with a citizens oversight board on an annual basis.
Any other questions, comments?
Clearly, this is something that's needed in our city. It's a little awkward that being up there, but you explained it well, that that was the number-one priority for our residents, and yeah, I'm in support of this.
Michael?
Thank you. I agree with you. I think I can move forward with this. The survey results were promising, and while the $4 million won't even address our street repair deficit, if we don't do this as a starting point, then we're only going to get worse off. It's going to be up to the voters to decide if this is appropriate for us or not. I know the county has had a lot of success with their half-cent measure. It was, Measure A was extended through Measure K, very broadly supported, and the county's been able to do some amazing things with that money. So I'm hoping that we're able to pass this as well and start addressing some of our shortfalls. So, thank you.
What he said? And I just, I have a little concern about the providing 400 million, I'm sorry, yeah, 400 million annually?
4 million.
4 million annually. Too bad it wasn't 400 million. 4 million annually, okay.
How many pounds of words? 75.
Because it's, we're not sure about it, and I know we're tight with words. Do we have any, can we put approximately? Do we have one more word left? Or potential, potentially providing?
I think we are at 75 words. Part of the reason why you see the cent symbol with half-cent is because as it together counts as one word.
Okay. I've had, in my experience politically, I've had that kind of thing come back and say, well, you said it's going to do this, and it didn't. So how come? How come?
Yeah.
We're at 75.
Yeah, we are at 75 words, exactly. I would tell you that it is an approximation. We could come in slightly over 4 million, slightly under 4 million. As time goes on, it very likely will be more than 4 million and increase. I just want to take a minute to look at it real quick, to reexamine it.
How about instead of no money for Sacramento, say nothing? Nothing for Sacramento? That gives you one more word?
If I may, Councilmember O'Connell, one of the perhaps less difficult ways to save a word is, instead of saying "expanding services to support local businesses," you could say "expanding services for local businesses," although that's not exactly the intent. But I think it's been wordsmithed by staff and the consultants, and I think staff was comfortable. I asked the question, you know, do we really want to say 4 million, or can we say approximately? And I think the response from staff was that they're confident that that's in the, close to being in the correct ballpark. So that's why we left it that way.
And whatever arguments are included with it could elaborate on how that number was arrived at.
Okay. Well, if that, if we can't do it, we can't do it, but that's my only concern. The rest of it, I'm highly in support of.
My question on this would be, where it says "increasing parking supply," quantify, oh, sorry. Your hand just went up.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just saying, you can go back to what the other council member said, but increasing parking supply. I know I would be reading that going, what does that mean? So you're building something? Is that for the garage? Is that for additional parking? What is, how do you quantify that? I understand there's so many words, but I'm just trying to understand myself.
It could be a whole host of strategies. It could be parking enforcement. It could be additional timed enforcement. It could be parking meters. And so, it's purposely open because we could implore a number of different strategies. One suggestion to save a word, instead of saying "expanding services to support," we can say "expanding services supporting local businesses," and then add the word "approximately" here, so taking out one word.
Perfect. In fact, that sounds better anyway. Thank you.
That's pretty good at this hour.
Yeah.
And getting back to Japan.
And jet lag and everything.
That's impressive.
Very impressive. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
30 minutes ago.
From council?
No. I'll move to...
Absolutely. And sir, with these two gentlemen left? Please. And you should sit up closer. You don't have to walk as far. Thank you, and I apologize. Thank you.
As by now, you probably know I'm Bill Ruggiero. I want to thank city staff for the report they did, and Jovan, I appreciate what you've done, and I see your work. I've learned a lot about you tonight, so thank you. I think it was 625 surveys that went out at first for 22 minutes, and then the rest went out in the mail, the second mailing. But I'm just a little disappointed the city spent $85,000 to do this survey just to come up with what you knew you were going to come up with. But I think this is, it's a done deal to put it on the ballot. I just, I don't like the finite, or the infinite, or unending date by voters. I would make sure, I would make sure I'm going to communicate that to the voters, that this is not, this is going to be ongoing forever unless, if they approve it. So, and in response to San Bruno Responds, I have a little bit of a problem, just so you know with that, because you can only use it with the app, your phone app. You can't use it with your computer or vice versa. I forget. It's late. I just wanted to make those points, and I think this is going to go on the ballot, and thank you for listening.
And thank you for your comments, Mel, and thank you for staying with us to offer those. Thank you very much.
Other questions or comments from council or action?
Can't nothing?
So if I may, Mr. Mayor, given the late hour, you have three actions to take this evening on this. The first would be to adopt the resolution.
Yes.
Calling for and giving notice of the general election. The second action would be waiving first reading of the ordinance. And the third action would be to introduce, by a two-thirds vote, that ordinance.
Okay. So do we have an action from council regarding the resolution for adoption?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second for the resolution?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Next, we would need a motion in second to waive the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear five of a voice. And now, we need the, to be introduced, the ordinance, by two-thirds vote.
I'll introduce the ordinance. Second.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Okay, that moves us on to, I think I hit all the spots. I think it goes on to Item B, under conduct of business.
Item 7B, adopt a resolution calling for the holding of an all-mailed ballot general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 5, 2019, for the election of certain officers as required by the provisions of the laws of the state of California relating to general law cities. Requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of San Mateo to render specified services to the city relating to the conduct of a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 5, 2019. Requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of San Mateo to consolidate a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 5, 2019, with other elections to be held on the same date pursuant to subsection 10403 of the Elections Code. Adopting regulations for candidates to elective officer pertaining to candidate statements submitted to the voters at an election to be held on Tuesday, November 5, 2019, and providing for notice of election.
Okay. Any additional information you want to provide, or?
So, just to clarify, the nomination period for this election opens Monday, July 15, which is this next Monday, and it runs until August 9, 2019. During this time, during this time period, San Bruno residents interested in running for local office may obtain election documents from the city clerk's office. Those documents must be completed and submitted to the city clerk's office in person by August 9, 2019, at 5:00 p.m. Due to the California Voters Choice Act, which was adopted in 2016, California is now run on an all-male ballot election system. All counties, all cities in California are affected by this. This allows greater flexibility and convenience for voters. Precinct polling places no longer exist due to the California Voters Choice Act, but voting centers have taken their place, and they exist in all San Mateo County cities. In San Bruno, we will have three voting centers. Two will be open starting four days before the election. Those locations are at San Bruno City Hall and the San Bruno Senior Center. There will be an 11-day voting center at Skyline College, open to the public 11 days before the election date. And any voter who resides in San Mateo County may visit any voting center within the county and vote on any local items that are on their ballot. Residents may register to vote for the November election either online at the Secretary of State website, which is registeredtovote.ca.gov, or in person at any voting center or at the San Mateo County Elections Division located at Forty Tower Road in San Mateo. And lastly, for this election year, San Bruno has two council seats on the ballot. These seats will serve for a three-year term. Typically, a council seat serves for a four-year term, but San Bruno is shifting from odd-year elections to even-year elections to comply with SB 415. SB 415 is a recently adopted law that requires all state, county, municipal, district, and school district elections to be held on an established even-year election cycle. school district elections to be held on an established even-year election cycle date. With that, if you have any questions?
Any questions or comments from council? One action on, one resolution will take care of everything. Is there any action from council?
Motion to adopt resolution.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Motion made in second.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Next item is comments from council members. We have a report out from Councilmember Medina regarding Progress Seminar held in Monterey, and any additional comments you have this morning?
Sure. On April 5 through the 7th, I attended the Progress Seminar in Monterey. I have attended this event for the last two years. It was great to hear directly from experts and colleagues from other cities, council members on criminal justice reform, mobility funding, the housing crisis, and sea level rise, four different sessions on those topics.
Anything additional? Okay. Michael? Ricky? No. Yes. With that said, staff, thank you for staying here and indulgence. Bill, Mike, thank you for being here. We're going to adjourn, and the next regular city council meeting will be held on July 23rd, right here at the San Bruno Senior Center. Meeting adjourned.